This evening. Again, our next public meeting is next week, Tuesday. This is a special meeting tonight, June 3rd. Our next meeting date, regular public meeting is June 11th, 2019 in the chamber. We have a couple of action items, and the first I'd like to ask to come to the podium is our engineer, Sohail Sabak, and his associates to explain a resolution which I'll read. The commission has before it a program that's required by our permits, both the state and federal permits at the level of the state MDEQ and the EPA for the permits we've received to operate our sewage plant, our wastewater treatment plant. So the motion is to recommend to the township board to approve the schedule, which is found on page 27, the schedule of programs and costs, to approve the schedule and authorize a budget amendment to the wastewater treatment plant fund budget for the sanitary sewage system asset management program. An expenditure amount for this year would be $317,500. That's the motion. And the history is of this, the total program over a four-year period would cost $685,000. As we've learned and been told in study sessions, this is all part of a requirement by the state of Michigan to operate our wastewater plant and by the EPA. These are called National NPDES permits to discharge into the Detroit River from our wastewater plant. We've had a lengthy discussion on this in the past, the study session for several hours last year, and this is an ongoing issue that anybody wants to see the requirements, they're welcome to come in and look at the state requirements, several pages of them actually. This is for the asset management program and to initiate a GIS program. And with that, we'll focus on page 27, which lists the costs for each year that are projected at this point in time, which is referred to as the draft schedule. And this has to be submitted to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality.
That is correct. To Eagle, actually, they call it Eagle now. We just mentioned it at the last meeting. If you recall, I did bring it up briefly, and we said we'll bring it again in front of the commission to discuss further because we need your consent before it goes to the board. And after it goes to the board, if the board approves it, we will respond to the March 11th letter from DEQ in which they required us to commit to an asset management plan per the NPDES permit you just mentioned. So this page here has a breakdown over four years of what we intend to do for the asset management plan. I just want to qualify that DEQ may not like the four-year spread. They'll be looking for something more condensed, like two-year or two-and-a-half-year program. But because affordability, because of budgeting purposes, we elected to just prepare it, spread it over four years, and we're going to send it that way and argue about it. And hopefully, we'll be successful arguing that this is how we're going to present it and do it between the year 2000 and 2023. So having said that, I'll turn it to Bruce to go over year by year and item by item to talk about what the tasks are and who's going to be undertaking the tasks and how much it's going to cost.
Okay. Thank you, Sil. The first upcoming, well, now is through April of 2020. We kind of mentioned these things in the previous study session that beginning the GPS, all the manholes in the next six months, then update all the CAD drawings that we have and begin building the GIS, what they call the, it's technical name, the Geo database, where we have, where all the manhole GPSing that gets done will reside in the manholes we put in with all along their information. And then there'll be the first version of the entire drawing of the system based on those points that were taken during the survey. And everything will then build on from that, all things you saw in the presentation. We'll start with that and go build upon that base map. That'll be done by basically our staff and our subconsultant FTCH. Again, we'll perform the next round of sewer cleaning and televising, which is underway right now. The first section's been completed and has been evaluated by our staff, and we'll be doing the same thing this year. The pipeline assessment, evaluation, again, that's what we're in the progress, process of doing right now. We're looking at district number two, and we'll be evaluating all the pipes based on that criteria. And then perform the manhole inspections. Again, you saw a lot of that in the presentation by Fishbeck, and what they'll be doing that. That'll be done by township staff. Update the inventory of all the assets at the wastewater treatment plant. Looking at $125,000 for that. Obviously, there's a lot of assets there, valves, pumps, motors, tanks, the building grounds, the whole site itself, and the buildings, the electrical, all the switchgear. Everything gets, we get again to just take the basic information of all the assets that are there. And then I mean, and then the last thing that'll happen in 2020 is an update will be sent to the, it's now called Eagle, for them to review, to show that we are making, this township's making progress on their commitment to do the asset management plan. The following year is kind of basically, in some ways, repeats itself. We'll go on to District 3 for sewer cleaning and televising. Again, we'll be evaluating all their videotapes and reports. The township staff will do the next round of manhole inspections. Again, form more, we get into the condition assessments at the wastewater treatment plant. That's saying basically what the pumps are at, if they have a 20-year lifecycle and they're at, you know, 18 years, is there, do they have more time left or are they needing to be replaced? We develop replacement costs for all the assets that are there, and then again, we submit an annual report in May 1st, 2021. In 2021 to 2022, begin, do the next district that needs to be cleaned and televised, we evaluate them, do the inspections on the manhole, then begin to develop what they call the business risk exposure for all assets. That's a requirement that's part of the NPDES permit. And it was mentioned again in the thing, in the presentation, where we have, on one side, we have probability of failure, you know, the age of the pipe, what's its probability it's going to fail within the next few years, and the criticality of the asset, where is it located, what does it serve? You can have an exact identical tenant sanitary sewer serving dead end on a subdivision street that has 25 houses on it, or it can be this, an agent or a tenant sewer that serves something more critical like a hospital. So all things considered, if you looked at them and you said, well, they're equal condition, but what would be the effects if one failed? Obviously, you would pick the one that serves the hospital that has a bigger net effect. And that's how you begin to build this rationalization of, okay, we're going to be, why are we doing this pipe segment first? Because it has a high probability it's going to fail, and then if it does fail, it's going to back up lots of people. Usually, it's based on, most of the time, it's on size because obviously, the bigger the pipe, the more people it serves, the more critical the consequences are going to be. So we begin to develop that, and then it's kind of a matrix where you have one on one side, one on the other. And if something ranks a five as a probability of failure and it's criticality, so it's five times five, so that's 25, so that's the highest rating, the highest critical rating that you can get. And then it goes down from there, all depending on where they fall on that scale.
So Bruce, we don't have a, we don't have a hospital, but we do have schools.
Yes, that would be one.
Schools would, they have bigger pipes, I know, servicing the schools.
Right. What would be the impact of that, you know, like this building? What happened if something, you know, the police station? You know, that's a critical asset if something happened there where they couldn't, you know, the sewer collapsed that served the police station, and, you know, that would be something that would be considered critical. And what you'd have to do if you had to shut down the police station, so you would choose doing, fixing that pipe over another pipe that served 10 houses is basically what you, how they go about doing it. And then at the end, again, we submit another annual report on May 1st, 2022. Then we enter the final year, be the final round of sewer clean, again, evaluating the pipe, finish up the manhole inspections. And then one of the new things would be develop a staffing plan. This is also part of your NPDS permit requirement. They want to see that, they want to show, they want us to show where the plant is right now at this day in staffing-wise. Is it adequately staffed to meet all the obligations, all the maintenance obligation and operation agreement, operational requirements that it takes to run the plant? And we do that by looking at the number of hours for each task, how many tasks are during the week, and figure out if there's enough people there to do that. We want to, you know, because that's, the state is, feels that's obviously a critical if, you know, everything can run well in the plant, but if for some reason it becomes short-staffed, it's hard to keep up on everything. They want to make sure that even though you do make improvements, they want to make sure that there's enough staff there to be able to do that. So we will do that and be able to say, well, you need one and a half more people, or it's overstaffed, or it's perfect, or something like that. So you'll get a report that will be for you to review, and we'll go over it and, you know, make sure you're okay with it, and it'll be sent on to the state for their review. And then there'll be the capital improvement plan, it'll be a 20-year plan. It usually starts out with the most critical assets that have to be replaced, and then it goes on from there. Throughout the 20 years, they'll cover both the wastewater treatment plant and all the pipes and all the manholes and all any other little subsidiary pump stations that are out there. And it'll, each year, it will say, these repairs need to be done, this maintenance needs to be done, the cost, and how critical they are. And that's something that we know that there's, you know, limits to funding and things like that. So we usually do it, we kind of give you the, when we're done with it, we give you kind of the Cadillac version of it, then we all sit down and talk about it, and then we figure out what's really realistic for the city, for the township. And then come up with a, with a capital improvement plan that we all, you know, you feel comfortable with that you have, that you can implement and keep it going to make sure all the assets are running, all the sewers flow, all the manholes are in good shape, and the wastewater treatment plant is working at its optimized, it's working at its best. So then we turn that over to the state. And then the developing a long-term rate structure, what the, that's also part of your, if I remember right, part of the permit. Because what they want you to look at is, okay, I got all these repairs and stuff like that, and, you know, they don't want it to end there. They want it to, want the study to show what it takes to fund these repairs. They look at your current rate and what it will take in years future to generate enough revenue to do these repairs. It could be either through rate increases, bonding, combination of it. They will give you recommendations that say, you know, this is where you need to be. And they also realize too... 35% increase, then year two, do a 30% increase. It's going to get spread out, so it makes, and we're all going to talk about it when we get the report and come up with, you know, what we feel is, what's reasonable for the, for the township that it can, has, generates enough money. Because I think right now, the simple test they have now is for viability is whether your, your expenses match revenues. So what you have coming in matches what you spend. There's not a deficit. That's kind of the test right now. But now they're going to say, okay, well, now you're adding all these other repairs and things like that. How are you going to be able to do this, finance this 20, 20 years down the road? Including, they're going to take in GLWA costs, your operational costs, and figure it all out, employee, you know, contract costs, and figure it out and say, okay, this is what you need to do every year to be able to afford these plans. So in a nutshell, that's it. It's pretty comprehensive. When you're all done, it provides you with a ton of information. This one thing it definitely does do, it's going to show some weaknesses, it's going to show some strengths, and it's a very, this is kind of, I guess, equate, this is kind of the, the way the private industry does things, doing these types of things. This is kind of where all this stuff came from. You know, they want, you know, they always talk about, well, government should run more like a business. Well, this is kind of how they do it. You know, you know, all the automobile industries look at down the road, 20 years, their plants what's got to be replaced, equipment-wise, maintenance-wise, and things like that. That's all the things we're going to go to. So it is pretty comprehensive when all this gets done and the information that it, that it brings forth, and we all be, you know, everybody will be better informed decision-makers. And you have some backup to it, because why are we doing this? Why are we doing that pipe? Well, this is the process that we went through. We just didn't use a dartboard or say, okay, we're just going to do this over here because we think that's the worst. It gives you some scientific background to say, okay, this is why we made the decisions, and this is why we got to do what we want to do.
Thank you. And I just want to mention again, before we get into discussion, is on your last point about creating a capital plan that works in terms of revenue and are you funding it? Ryan Welch has been working real hard on taking the plan information that Joe Keefe, our prior director, a couple of years ago now, a year and a half ago, had put together, and he's been updating it. We, he and I have been talking. This year, in our current budget for capital, which is funded, we have expenditure of capital improvements of $328,000, and one of the items is budgeted at $280,000. It's, I forget now, what is it for?
The intermediate lift pump.
The intermediate lift pump replacement. And that's in addition to the bar screen project, the duparon project. But so that's funded, and what I want to tell the commission, at the next meeting, Brian's going to bring in a six-year plan. The first year is this year, five-year capital plan, and each year, it's around $300,000, a little less, maybe a little more, but nothing exceeds what we already have budgeted. So I think the point is, is that we're trying to address our capital needs at the plant based on current budget levels that we can fund. And I think that's where we are. That's, that's what we're shooting for anyway. So he's been working hard on that, I know. So anyway, just wanted to mention that. Now, you have before you, is there anything else, Sohail or Bruce?
That's, in a nutshell, what this is going to give us, an instrument to assess and evaluate, come up with costs and budget for the capital improvement plan and make sure that DE, that Eagle will approve it. Again, like I said earlier, we spread this over four years, something they may not like, but we're going to forcefully push it through, and hopefully, they'll accept it. And again, that's based on affordability because, like Bruce mentioned, he doesn't, you don't want to come up with a rate that's going to be 35% increase and 25% increase. That's not something that is affordable to undertake. So we're spending it in a way that it may coincide with retiring some bonds eventually. Then if we can afford it, then we'll look at it. We have done in the past what you call an affordability analysis and submitted that to DEQ that did show a moderate impact on the township. And based on that, we were able to argue the ACO timeline with them. So we didn't have to meet it and finish it all in 2021. They allowed us to complete it at least the first element up to 2024, 2025. Then from there, we'll do another assessment, undertake on it. So this is a good instrument to look at and submit to them, and it'll give us kind of a guideline of what we need to follow, still trying to meet their NPDS requirements.
Okay.
Just had one, one little quick thing, just another point, is that any, from what I understand, is that, you know, for any future, like, funding that comes up for grants or loans or stuff like that, one of the questions they're going to ask is, do you have an asset management plan? So, you know, they know they're, it's going to knock you down on any, any, any potential funding for grants or loans or anything like that. They're going to, you know, because that's, that's what they want to happen, is people have asset management plans, so they're going to give the break to the communities that have it.
Days of grants for wastewater plants are long gone.
Oh, I know, but things change.
Township manager Dale Reum is here, and I'll invite Dale up in a minute. I just want to reiterate, what we're being asked to do with this resolution is to make a recommendation to the township board to approve the schedule as laid out here. And part of it is to amend our wastewater treatment plant budget and draw out a fund balance, doesn't affect their operating cost, drop, drop out of the three-plus-million-dollar fund balance we have, enough money to fund the $317,500 this year, and it's expected that each year we'll use those same funding sources to a total of over four years of $685,000. Dale, you've attended our meeting. I certainly want to invite you up to the podium to address the issue before us tonight. And thank you for being here. Mr. Nelson, Jim Nelson, a trustee of the township, thank you for being here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, there's been a lot of detail and explanation, but what I wanted to at least present to the commission was a draft resolution that I put together with Larinda Benatol, my previous DPS director, that we assume that the DPS commission will make a recommendation to the board, which is the request being before you. And then this resolution, we would like to present, and that was, I think, believe, page 30 in your packet. And I won't read it verbatim, but I'll just give an overview of what we tried to encapsulate this all together. But basically, the DEQ, and we wrote this a month and a half ago, and I think it was referenced earlier, they changed their name again. I suppose I can change the resolution. But they have required that we undertake this asset management plan. And we are required to properly operate, maintain the facilities that we have under our control, the sanitary sewer system, the treatment plant. And we have to comply with all the requirements, conditions, and their permits, as well as the standards that we are required to address. And the asset management program is centered on the framework of five core elements, and these elements in the resolution come out of the state of Michigan requirement. And that is that we have to evaluate the current state of the assets, and we have to determine what the assets need to be to function properly, and how we can sustain performance on the critical assets, which is a rating or a priority. And then we have to look at the costs involved in addressing that and having a long-term strategy so we can accomplish those goals and keep our system operating properly. And as well as how are we going to staff and train? So as mentioned, we have a four-year cycle that we are putting together before the state of Michigan, and I believe that they prefer it be shorter, but I don't see any other option that we have with all the irons that we have in the fire, with the commitment we're making, with all the work we're doing at our wastewater treatment plant, and these are kind of working together as well. So we're going to stand really strong with that, with that timeframe. And I really, I really believe that they should accept that properly. The total for the entire project is $685,000. In year one, we were asking for $317,000 from the township board. And you had saw before you presented that May 14th schedule with all the different four-year programs, and that is referenced in this document. And is requesting that the township board adopt this resolution and amend the budget to approve the schedule based upon the recommendation which I had requested from your commission. So this meeting is scheduled for June 10th before the township board.
It's Monday.
Which is why I appreciate, I know the May 14th meeting was delayed, so we were able to reschedule it this evening prior to the next township board meeting. So I want to pass on a thanks. Any other questions?
I might want to stay there, but before we get into any discussion, if there is any, I'd like to have a motion and a support, and then we can initiate discussion.
So moved.
So it's been moved and supported that we adopt the resolution that we have before us. I won't repeat it, but we've talked about it enough. So we have a motion on the table. I'll open it up to any questions from the commission. Phil. Sohail or Bruce. I just note that the two of the items, the inventory and the inventory condition of $250,000, and of course, these say estimated cost. I mean, what is the realistic expectation of how these numbers will actually play out when the money actually has to change hands?
Eventually, it all becomes a policy decision to what we define as an asset, especially at the plant. You could go to the tiniest bolt and create, call that an asset, or you can take the major component, call them assets. What we intend to do is minimize as much as possible, forensically analyzing what is an asset at the plant. We don't want to go to the minor, minute elements of it. We like to focus on mostly the operational elements, like the pumps, the valves, the piping, the control panels, the actuators, the structural elements in the plant. So these are things that, if they fail, will have a catastrophic result. So we like to focus on those and analyze them. Once we, once we create this asset table, then we have to go do a condition assessment of it. Then that's, I mean, it's an expensive item, I understand, but it is involved a little bit because unfortunately, you couldn't see as much of the manhole evaluations on the screen when they made the presentation earlier. But you, you can take him and subdivide him into different condition elements that you can describe one by one, and you have to assign a cost, an age, a condition. And after you do that, you have to come up with a replacement timeline for it. Can I, can I work with this pump for the next 10 years? Maybe not. Maybe it's already past its longevity. So if it's a pump that should have lasted 15 years and are pushing 20 years on it, that becomes something that has to be replaced right away. So we get assigned a number to it that it's a critical to replace, it's in a bad condition. So we apply these two numbers together, and we came up with the, what we call the business risk exposure. And yes, like I said, it's an expensive item, but it's very critical to analyze and define before we make a decision as far as where it sits in the capital improvement. Because the business risk exposure number, if we apply something that's five by five, that's 25, the size number, that moves it way up on the priority list as far as being a priority number in the capital improvement plan. Then we have to fund it. We have to come up with a funding source for it to make sure that it is affordable to township to undertake. Did that answer your question, or is it still?
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I mean, I understand. I guess what I'm saying is, at what detail do we have to get down? Do we have to go and evaluate the, the light switch that turns on the lights when you go into the plant? Do we have to evaluate light bulb longevities, or is it basically operational equipment that would cause the plant to degrade in performance if it failed or went out?
Unfortunately, as much as we look at the light switch as an element that's not critical, they look at the lighting in general as an element. So we look at, at the lighting in general. Is the lighting adequate? Is there enough light for the, for the staff to be able to move around without getting hurt? I mean, there's more of a safety concern with the lighting than just the operational condition of the switch. Yes, it's critical, you turn a switch and 10 lights come on, but we're not going to go that minute into the detail of assessing or creating an asset of the light switch. We create an asset for the lighting in general. Is the lighting adequate? Are the conduits in good shape? Are they corroded? Do they need to be replaced? Are the light fixtures corroded? So it becomes one asset, lighting will be one asset. Every individual pump may become an asset on its own. You have intermediate pumps, you have affluent pumps, you have, now we're going to be adding the bar screens that we're going to be putting in, hopefully, the end of the summer. Those become something that we hope they don't have to be replaced for 15 years, but we got to put a number on their condition to maintain them every year. They need, they're... a number on their condition to maintain them every year, they require maintenance.
Would it be safe to assume, though, that once we've expended this great amount of money initially, it would just be a matter of keeping it updated?
That's exactly it, yes, yes.
So this wouldn't be a recurring?
No, no, that's not a recurring cost, this is, again, creating a platform, or an instrument, or a tool for us to keep track of, like I said, you could do it in a spreadsheet or you can do it in a GIS, once you create it, all you have to do is look at it and keep track of it, so every year, you go and change the life of this pump from, it's gonna last 10 years, next year you're gonna change it to, it's gonna be nine years, so you change the numbers on it, then if you see something that's more critical as far as a condition, then you note that and the remarks that this pump is disintegrating or depreciating faster than we thought, so.
Ted, you have a question?
Just one, excuse me, just a comment, we haven't been ignoring these, so it's not like we're gonna be looking 20,000 things that have to be fixed.
No, I understand.
We've done a continual upgrade, so I don't think, I'm assuming his estimate is based on his engineering background, knowledge of the plant, that our fiscal plan, but I think that, I don't think the condition, we're in a condition critical on anything at this point.
That's an important thing to say, because Joe Keefe and Ryan Walsh are the guys that are throwing the switch, they're listening to the pumps, you know how when your car starts to malfunction and it sputters, you go, oh geez, you know, we better get it tuned up, or whatever, so the vast majority in skill in evaluating our operating equipment, not the light switch, but the big stuff, has always been and will continue to be in the hands of now Ryan Walsh, Joe Keefe did it for a long time, and those are the hands-on guys, it's like the pilot, all of a sudden his nav equipment goes out, guess what, if you can't fly instrument, you're gonna invert the plane and crash, unfortunately, Kennedy.
I think it's important, because we're gonna get a lot of static from this.
Yes.
We're gonna get a lot of feedback at the board level, and from, if they don't understand, because if it comes off that we've allowed this to get to a deteriorated level, that we haven't been doing our job, well, that's not the case, the case is really, this is to identify the condition, and in most cases, we've got a pretty well-operated plant, and we've maintained and controlled its operation for a long time, it's important because I can tell you what that's gonna be at that podium, and I can tell you what they're gonna say, that we're not taking care of it, but that's not the case.
Like I said, the intent is not to degrade the plant, definitely not its operating and its meeting its performance, however, the obligation is to present an asset inventory, an asset condition assessment, that's all we're saying, and based on that, you come up with the numbers, we're not saying that it's falling apart, we're not saying it's in a great condition either, we're saying that has to be assessed.
We need to say that.
Yes, yes.
I'll make sure I do, as you will too.
We need to say that.
Yes, no, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, Ted.
Comments, Jim, anybody?
I just have a question more than a comment, with our township staff performing the manhole inspections, it sounded like those manhole inspections are somewhat time-consuming, with our limited staff, and, you know, the other things that I'm assuming they do in an eight-hour day, are they gonna have time to perform this? And, you know, with, or...
With the budget constraints, we tossed out, out there's an idea to get this off, kick this program off because of the timeline, it was already, we've already responded with a plan, so in the meantime, we saw this coming, and during the winter months when we weren't busy on water main breaks, we went out and started the program, about three months into it, we were informed that you have to have the certification, and it's gotta have the GIS location, we were taking pictures and doing a manual inspection, so now we're gonna start again, but at this time, I believe that we could do the survey part at least, because that can be anywhere from five to 10 minutes on a survey.
Right, right.
Versus then, okay, now we need to evaluate, can we afford to pay the contractor to do it, or do we want to keep doing those surveys on our own?
Well, and that's, and my question is just with, do we have, will we have the time, will our staff have the time to do it and get it done?
I believe we can do the initial survey, now the 40 questionnaire, or 40 questions on that one page, like she said, it's gonna take about a half an hour for each one.
Right.
And then we're, Derek.
And that's what, that's where the question's coming from.
Decide if we want to continue to do that, or we want to sub it out.
Okay, so, but we don't, we don't need to know that for this, right, I mean, if we...
No, the obligation is there, as long as the DQ sees that you'll be doing it, how will you do it?
If we, if we decide to go a different way to get it, as long as it gets done, that's all they care about, okay, good enough, thank you.
Feel free to chime in.
Sure, I think that one of the concerns is whether or not there's a cost associated with that, so is there a cost for equipment?
Well, there's certainly a cost, whether they're doing it or we're paying somebody, there's a cost for their time, but it's the question of, if they're spending days doing this, that's days that other work isn't getting done.
And with the limited staff like we have, I mean, you have to make sure that you have the time to be able to do the work, I guess from the budget standpoint, is there a cost to that for equipment or training that would be necessary that you should account for within this budget, because right now you have zero.
Right.
So, I mean, if we're gonna be doing the GPS-ing of the structures, if we're doing the inspection of the structures, that would indicate we have to have costs for training built in here, and cost for equipment, so.
Let me just jump in here, and I don't remember the figure, I think it was like $21,000 or something?
We have $35,000 set aside.
Okay, so each year, the last couple of years, Larinda had, our prior director, had put in the budget, startup of GIS, to buy equipment, to do the training, get the certifications, we haven't done it, so each year that money went into the fund balance.
Perfect.
So there is money in the budget, and I don't, again, I don't know if it's 21,000 or 31,000, but there is money in the budget for GIS, and it's a line item as GIS, in the operating budget.
And those dollars should seem about appropriate for what you want to do then, so that's great, good, good.
I guess we're fortunate that it just happened to be in there, thrown in, so. Thanks for the comment, though, appreciate it. All right, any other comments? All right, so we have a motion on the floor, if there are no other comments, I'd ask for a vote, all in favor of adopting the resolution, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, and we'll make a recommendation to the Township Board. Thank you, Mr. Manager, I guess you'll, will you, I know you have this same report in the hands of the city clerk to go forward with the agenda for next Monday, will you advise Brian, our city clerk, that it was unanimous vote, and you can proceed? Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Next, again, we have Ryan Welsh here, Ryan, you're welcome to come up and give an update on a couple of items at the wastewater plant.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Ann.
First on the list is the O'Parin Influent Fine Bar Screen, C. Rains is currently finalizing the bidding documents, and it will go out for bid by June 10th, so, on that. Next is the Elevator Hoistway Ventilation, this week, G. Missler is coming to the plant on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday to measure and start the installation of the hoistway fan system, and once we have that complete, we can have the Troy elevator come and replace the cables for the elevator, and then, once we have those in place, we have to have the state inspector, and he just has to sort of tie that.
So it's moving along, finally, finally.
Yes, it is, and, yeah.
So I understand, as far as the elevator, they have to break, cut into the concrete walls surrounding the elevator, and once the ventilation system is installed, then a brick mason has to come and brick it up.
Yes, yep.
Apparently, one of the holdups, G. Missler's been the mason, getting a mason to come out and be willing to do a small job like that, small but critical, well, that's good news, and to the Commission, I would just say, we've been talking to Ann, and our treasurer's sitting right here, you know, in the budget, DPS budgets, and we'll be talking about this in July, but if we get bids on the bar screen project, which, including all the costs, so forth, permitting and everything else, it could be well over a million dollars to put the bar screen lift situation in the wet well at the wastewater plant, then we would, with the Township Treasurer, the budget approved, proposed, and you may want to speak to us a little bit, Ted, is, we go out and issue a major bond, a revenue bond, we have the revenue, and the budget demonstrates we can pay based on retiring debt that's already occurred, pay for up to a $6 million bond, and we talk about water mains as well that we're gonna replace, so that's kind of exciting, because as soon as we want to award the bid on the bar screen project, we gotta get the money, and so we'll have to get out and be ready to issue the bond, and we'll talk about this again at our July meeting, because we're gonna have a report on the water system brought to us at our July meeting, but at that point, we're gonna start talking specifically about what are we gonna do for a major bond issue, and what's the timing of it, the timing would be critical here, because if you award the bar screen project, we gotta be able to pay for it, and that would be installed first, and my thinking at least, we'll have our new director on board, we'll see what he says, but we would probably bid out the water main towards the end of the year, get better bids, this is not a time to bid water main, we're almost, well, we're into June already, if we bid it out, say, November, December, with construction to start in the winter, probably get better pricing, so, anyway, it's kind of an exciting prospect for us, and we're gonna talk about this again at our next meeting and in July, so, at any rate, good report, thank you, anything else you want to add?
Nothing else.
Ryan, how have you been holding up with all this rain at the plant?
We're okay, we had about an inch of rain this past weekend, last month, we had 4.8 inches of rain for May, that's a lot of rain, but, yeah, I mean, we've been all right, just...
Didn't have to bypass?
We, we did for May, yeah, but that was it, just once, and then with the river just, it's real high in that, that also, and, yeah, that's not good for us.
Yeah, it's like living in a rainforest.
Yep, so, but, yeah, we're moving along.
Gonna have to build new discharge that's above the normal level of the docks, a lot of docks are, a lot of docks are underwater on the island.
Yep.
Okay, well, I think, I think we're all set there, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next item is Solid Waste Subcommittee, and who's on the Solid Waste Subcommittee?
I know I am.
I think I am. Bill is?
Yeah.
Brenda, don't you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, anybody want to be on the sub, does another member want to be on the Solid Waste?
What is the Subcommittee doing, Bill?
Well, we're gonna be doing a lot, so here's the situation, our contract is up in November, I think, and I could be corrected on this, we have to give either a 90-day or 120-day notice of termination of the contract, but it's terminated, essentially, we extended it two years because of the bridge situation. Brian Conaway is the representative from Waste Management, and Brian was, I recently saw Brian, and I talked to him this past Thursday, the question I asked was, okay, are you gonna come in with a proposal? He had approached our prior director about coming in with a proposal, and he hadn't had it developed at that time, but he does now, he said they've done an analysis, and there's no way they continue to serve the island with the current rate structure, so they're gonna have to ask for a rate increase, so, talked to our incoming director about this, and he just went through something in Gibraltar, I think, I'll address this right now, and you just went through this in Gibraltar, and he's got some ideas, so here's the way we left it, Brian Conaway's gonna come in and want to meet with us to the Subcommittee, and at least talk about where he's at, so we can evaluate that, not only is cost issue for the pickup of our normal refuse one issue, but the other issue is recycling, and when I talked to him the other day, there's several ways we could go on it, I don't know that I agree with any, any of the alternatives personally, but they're all out there to lay open, and I don't know what kind of price he's coming in with, but here's what we agreed on, we've selected two dates for a possible meeting, and our incoming directors agreed with these dates, the morning of June 25th, which is a Tuesday, or the 26th, which is a Wednesday, for the Subcommittee to meet about 9:30 in the morning with Brian and receive comments from him, and I think I asked you, Phil, over the phone, and Jim, if those dates were good for you, and Brenda, I don't know who else is, I thought you were on the committee.
I maybe, and I think Lenny might be also, because I think he...
Well, we can't have more than four of us, so, so, that's the Subcommittee, so, if you want to be on the committee?
I don't think I can make either one of those dates.
Okay, well, then you're not on the committee. Ted, would you like to join us?
Well, because it's a contract bill, we want two board members in there.
All right.
Got Jim sitting in there, it just looks bad for the setup, I'm not sure it's the thing to do, but I do have, I do have some input on that, so if I could talk with you guys before you meet, that'd be really great.
Well, we'll ask, I'll check the record and see if Lenny's on the committee, but it's one of those two dates, so all we have to do tonight is select a date, Jim?
My, I'd prefer the 25th.
Phil, does that work for you?
I prefer the 26th, which did he say?
26, the 25th.
I'll make it work.
Phil, guys, I don't want to feel torn like this, I can do either.
I, you know, if the 26th works best, Phil, I'll do, I can do the 26th.
It's gonna be the 26th, would you like to change the time?
No, 9:30.
You wanna do 9?
9, 9:30 is fine.
9:30 works for you, okay, all right, I'll confirm that to Brian, so we have a meeting of the Subcommittee set up, myself, you, Jim, and you, Phil, and I'll ask Lenny for the 26th at 9:30, so that's one issue. Next issue, I would, since Ohio's in the audience, I want to comment that the Township recent, and Dale's here too, recently received a letter from Wayne County, and if you recall, when we did the West River Road Water Main Project, we had, we had actually ended up with more funding for road resurfacing than we were able to spend in the constraints of the project, the project going to just Church Road, and we hoped to be able to go past Church on West River, north of Church, and that wasn't allowed, so that left about $300,000 on the table, that wasn't spent, that Wayne County was willing to pledge. So Ohio and his staff have gone to Wayne County, and thank you, Sohail, the letter that Township Manager just received, I think, Dale, indicates that they are willing to allow us to take that money and apply it to the, since it's the same contractor, I believe, over to the Park Lane Water Main Project, where we're gonna have water, road resurfacing, and use that $300,000 on the Park Lane Project to essentially reduce our costs out of our water fund, and the Wayne County money would be used to do the milling and the resurfacing to finish the road in that area, so I wanted to report that, and I want to thank you, Sohail, you and your staff, that was good work, so appreciate that, and last thing is, is at the... work. So appreciate that. And the last thing is, is at the, Lorinda Benito's retirement, we adopted a resolution and presented it to Lorinda. And Phil, I think I talked to you about this. But anyway, thanks for signing that and resolution. So anyway, that's, I just thought you'd like to have it. You can just look at it on your own. I'm not going to read it. So we look forward to working with Derek. And Derek, you wanted to speak, so come up to the podium. Oh, you're all set?
Yep.
For now? We're going to talk about refuse at another time, I guess. Okay. I don't have any other matters. Is there any report from you, John, since we're here?
Got Commissioners Report is next, but I can go if you'd like.
Well, we didn't have a place for you, so I thought I'd give you a spot.
Well, by all means, here we go. So Safeway Transport, our televising and cleaning contractor is on horse mill, moving southbound on Meridian. We'll be getting ready to go into Whitehall, Highland, that area in there, real soon. The Park Lane Water Main Project is under full progress. We're moving northbound from Bridge Road all the way up to where Park Lane meets Meridian. Currently, as of this afternoon, we have 1,100 feet installed. And the project's going very well. I will, would like to notify everybody, they will be working every Saturday for the duration of this project. They got a three-week delay beginning because of all the rain. They, this was the, this past Saturday was the first Saturday they worked. They got rained out. So they'd like to get this project in the ground and complete as soon as possible. So please bear with us. Also, keeping in mind that the traffic is one-way, southbound only, from Meridian all the way down to Bridge Road. And please drive carefully through the construction site.
Everybody's okay with that?
Are so good. Our main break, or, excuse me, our water main break restoration project has begun. Sorry for the delay. It's been just so rainy, we would make a bigger mess of your yard than what we're trying to clean up. So we did begin that this week. So bear with us on that. We'll be by to fix up your yard. And welcome to Derek, and looking forward to working together. That's all.
Okay. And one, one final question, since you're here, Sohail. Can you give us an update on the local road paving program? Where we are with that?
Yes. We have a contractor that was recommended for award, and we have an award, but we are not going to sign a contract until the IGA is processed and approved by the county. The IGA just came back on Friday afternoon to the Township, to the supervisor. And as I reviewed it this morning, I found out that they're requiring insurance of $5 million at the minimum, which is kind of steep for a contractor of the size of the contractor we have doing this job. So I called the county and discussed that with Ron Agazinski, who drafted the, who initiated the IGA, sent it to his corp counsel, and they came back with this risk management requirement. He agrees, and he said the only way around it is to reach out to the new Director of Engineering, Mr. Michael Van Antwerp, and put our concerns in writing to him. So I'll be working with Dale on putting a letter together, send it to him, so he can elevate it to the corp counsel and lower that limit. It's, it'll cost the contractor lots of money to buy a $5 million policy. It's easier to buy a $3 million policy. And for a $500,000 job, we don't see any need that he has to carry that much. So we'll get going on that tomorrow. We're not going to waste time because unless we have that IGA approved, we shouldn't be signing a contract with the contractor. We got to make sure the funds are there for us.
So this is the county, county proposal program that they laid out for us. We notified them in December what we were going to do. And they still didn't give us a signed IGA, which is an intergovernmental local agreement.
Apparently, there was a backlog. They were processing about 25 IGAs in one shot. So the bad part about this, even after we sign it, we agreed to the limits, if we get them to lower to 3 million and we sign it, it still has to go to the Commission for approval. And I did talk to Andy Candrivas and Mr. Palamera about having them assist us pushing that through the Commission. So we're hoping they can do that once we sign it.
So where does the contractor stand? Does he understand?
I spoke with him today, and he has no choice but to understand because we can't commit him to start work without having the funds available. So, you know, if the county reneges on the deal and we end up having to pay him $388,000 of the Township budget, it's not something good, so.
Maybe by the end of, by next week, Tuesday, we might know a little more?
We intend to send the letter tomorrow. We'll get that drafted and sent to Mike Van Antwerp tomorrow. And hopefully, he'll agree, then he'll elevate it to corp counsel within a couple of days. We should get it back revised, and we'll take from there.
Oh, you are? Okay.
So... Are we planning chip seal, is there?
We haven't planned on any chip sealing, but we do have some joint sealing part of this contract.
No chip sealing.
No chip sealing. I don't, so.
Lot of concrete repair, some asphalt repair, and a lot of, about $100,000.
Are we going to revisit this chip seal, or are we done with it?
Well, I'd like to, but money's in this.
Chip seal's a very good, successful thing. And it's economical, vis-à-vis other things.
I'm just curious.
Well, I'd be glad to visit at any time with an empty pocket. So I walk around with my pocket inwards. Anyway, keep us posted on that if you want.
I will, I will.
Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. I have nothing else. John has nothing else? Commissioners?
I have something, and it's for the Commission. It's a letter from a resident that I'd like to read from, read to you. To Grozeal DPS Commission, "As we all know, the winter months are hard on our roads, and dirt roads are no exception. We have requested assistance on two occasions this year to fix, is it Blo, Blo, Blovelt, Waterway in Chicory. Lorinda and John have been there for us as always. The potholes were so bad, people were driving on the edge of lawns instead of the road just to avoid the large holes. These roads needed additional dirt and rock to keep the potholes from reoccurring. I placed my request with John Kime early in April. John told me that he'd get, would take care of it. Within three hours of my call to John, two county road repair trucks were on the scene adding additional materials to the road and bringing the roads back to their original condition. This is the type of service we have continued to receive from our DPS. Please compliment the people for a job well done. The people of Grozeal Manor appreciate this great service. Keep up the good work. Sign, Bob Zalasko." So thank you, John.
That's very nice. Thanks, Jim. The compliment. Brenda?
And that's all I have.
Nope.
Done.
I was just reflecting on the fact that there's so much hockey thoughts in the air with Stanley Cup. And I remember Frank Kent, who played hockey at Michigan State, and he's no longer with us. And I just thought how much, I always enjoyed his practical, common sense approach to many things, which tended to simplify situations. And I just wanted to make that comment and nothing further.
John, that's very appropriate. Frank was a wonderful guy. He was. Phil?
Nothing further.
Les?
Uh, John, is the county going to come out and grade the roads?
Yes, sir.
Next question is, some of the gravel roads that I've gone onto, there isn't potholes. They're craters. I mean, they've gotten so bad with water in them and more people driving through them, they've got deeper and wider. And they haven't been touched since last spring.
Due to all the rain, they are delayed because they're trying to keep up with the whole county, but we'll get them here as soon as we can. And then they're also going to do them again before we get the dust control.
That was my next question.
Well, we can't do dust control. We're at the mercy of the weather for that one. And then as soon as the rain stops, we'll get on that as well. Good thing is with the rain, we're not getting any dust. I know it's creating a lot of potholes, but there's no dust.
You got to put up with one without the other. That's all I have.
Ted?
Just thank the Commission. You guys do a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And Jim, since you're here, Mr. Nelson, you have anything to add?
I would just like to echo what Ted just said. It's, I love to come to this being because it's very, very informative. I learn a lot, and it helps me make good decisions. Thanks to the Commission.
We all learn a lot every night, too, so, thank you. All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will make a motion that we'll adjourn the meeting.
Support.
9:50.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.